Good evening. We'll call the March 10, 2022 Select Board Meeting, Town of Danby to order. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Abbott.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Motion to set the agenda. I have some additions. The Treasurer's Report will include a discussion of ARPA based on the latest information that we gleaned from a presentation today. And a bunch more fleet permits came in. I will read those to you if you want to write them down. AmeriGas, Cardinal Logistics, Fuller Sand and Gravel, R.K. Miles, Steve Newton, and C.N.R. Under the Road Commissioners Report, we had a little email about Bridge 7 to discuss. And after we finish with new business, we should have an executive session to deal with a real estate matter.
I guess my comment on Bridge 7 is we're just saying that we're gonna... I guess, yeah, it's one quick...
Any other additions, deletions, suggestions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make it.
Tom will rush.
So Tom will make it, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor of setting the agenda with the additions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll open the floor to comments from the public. Beth.
Hi.
Aye.
I'm Beth Thompson. And the first thing I want to say is, I don't know which one of the storms it was that we had some torrential rains, and they all came down that hill on Edmunds Road and wiped out part of what was right in front of my house. I just want to thank the road crew because I almost fell in with my car, and I got past it. And then, when I got home from doing my shopping in Rutland, it was taken care of, and I was really very grateful.
I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I know they're gonna be out tomorrow night, so, yeah. Okay. Then, okay, not gonna get all choky about this. We were all pretty shaken up by that murdered boy who was by the side of Staley Mountain Road over a month ago. And I saw an article in the Bennington Banner that was about his family, and I think that was about a month ago also. I thought it might be really nice of the town to write a letter of condolence to the aunt of the 17-year-old. And I really recommend you read the article because he was just some kid that got in with bad people. And I even drafted a short with sweet.
Do you have her address?
I don't, but I have the name of the man who wrote the article, who interviewed her. And I thought, you have the address?
No, I have the name of the article and the...
Oh, okay. So I've got the name of the guy, I've got the woman's name, and I'm sure the guy that wrote the article.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm thinking you could probably get in touch with him, and if you want to use this, you could, or you don't have to.
Thank you.
Whoops. Because I just feel like to just drop that, like it never happened, it doesn't sit.
Good suggestion, thank you. Other comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve two sets of minutes, one for February 10, which was our regular February meeting, and one for March 3, which was the reorganization meeting.
I'll make the motion we approve them.
I'll second it.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Were the minutes for February 10 on the website?
I believe so. You did not see them?
No.
I know...
Yeah, I'm just not having it.
Okay, I know that I sent them to her, and I know that she acknowledged them. And I have a receipt from her that she received them.
I'll look at it.
So I'm 99 and 9/10% sure that they're there.
Yeah.
And Mike, did you second that?
Are you checking on your phone?
Yeah, I'm checking.
Thanks.
Yeah, they're...
They're all...
They are.
Okay.
I missed that posting.
Any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or negative votes? Okay, it passes unanimously. Appointments. It's that time of year when we start over again with certain things, and we have some vacancies for appointments that have expired. For a number of years now, the legislature has not required an appointment of such positions as pound keeper, inspector of lumber, shingles and wood, weigher of coal, service officer, or grand juror. So I'm willing to entertain any discussion that you might have about that, and moving forward, just not including those positions anymore, they've become obsolete.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Now, my question is, why is the grand juror not?
The grand juror has basically been replaced over the years by a town attorney. So if your town is involved in a legal matter, you would use your town attorney.
And why don't we inspect lumber anymore?
Because it's too expensive.
This home being closed in Rutland, can't it?
Did Danby ever have a pound?
A what?
A pound?
Not that I know of. I know we had a jail for it.
I think the last pound keeper I thought was Phil Raish.
Oh, that could be.
Twenty... And since we no longer have a constable, he would... You know, when we had a constable, he would take a stray dog to Phil Raish. That comes under the services now of the sheriff. Okay, so is it the consensus of the board that will abandon these positions?
Tom's still thinking, so let's give him a second.
Well, I was just wondering what everyone else's thought was too, so I'm just...
Well, I've said mine, so...
No, I think it's one less step that we need to do.
All right.
What is a service officer?
A service officer was a person, if you found yourself in a difficult position, say you didn't have any food in your house, they would help you get food. Well, now we have a food pantry. This was back...
It replaced overseer of the poor.
And it was back in the day before we had social services on a county level.
So do we need a motion?
I don't believe we do. I'll just move forward with the agenda and say that we discussed it, and people were all in favor of abandoning the positions, unless I hear anything to the contrary. But it sounds like everybody's good to move into the modern era.
Well, I think that we're all in agreement on it, but I think we should make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we discontinue these positions.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of discontinuing those positions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is to appoint a person to take minutes at the Select Board Meeting.
Do we have any candidates for that position?
I had asked the town clerk, she is not interested, and we had some discussion with Dreya after the...
Well, she was very interested.
That was my impression, too.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Are you...
I'm making...
Are you still very interested?
Yeah, I don't mind if...
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dreya.
I'll second it.
I do it for the Planning Commission as well. And you do a very good job. Thank you.
So that was made by Tom and seconded by...
Let you finish tonight.
Yes, and then we'll have a conversation after the next...
Who was the second on that?
Steve.
Steve. All those in favor of Dreya Stoddard becoming the minute taker at Select Board Meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Dreya, and thank you. Okay. Rutland Regional Planning Commission, representative and alternate. Presently, we have Shelley Taylor and Michelle Bushey, who serve in that capacity. Shelley has indicated that she is interested in continuing. I have not heard anything to the contrary from Michelle.
I make a motion we appoint Shelley and Michelle.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that? Any other nominations? All those in favor of Shelley and Michelle, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On the local planning commission, we have two three-year terms that are open, and we have several people that are interested. We have Donald Keeler. We have Hilda Haynes. We have Craig Moran. And we have Sarah Wild. So we have four people that are interested in two positions.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Hilda Haynes back, as she's doing a great job there.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of Hilda Haynes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we need one more...
Put me down as abstention.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have one more position to fill. So now you have a choice of Donald Keeler, Craig Moran, or Sarah Wild.
I make motion we put Donnie on.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of Donald Keeler, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We have a position for Rutland Solid Waste Representative. So right now, we have Steve Haynes and Tyler Pierce serving.
And again, I have not been able to make any of the meetings, as I said last year, because they're right during milking. So if there's anybody that is interested...
But you've been keeping up on the...
I've been trying to keep up on it, but I haven't been able to make any of the meetings. They're usually right in the middle of milking, and...
Ken, are you interested in tackling that?
What is it entailling?
It's usually a meeting a month. They're... Here lately, they've been doing them all remote. And it could be anywhere from discussing the budget of the waste district to dealing with contractors that haven't paid for their permits.
And what time? You said that's been running during milking?
I believe it's been running either at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night.
Yeah. Guess I can give it a whirl.
I'll make a motion that... Unless anyone else wants to raise their hand out there? I'll make a motion that we put Ken Abbott as the rep to the Rutland Solid Waste, and that we put Steve Haynes as the alternate. Is that how the second guy is?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it.
So it's by Fuller and Fuller. All those in favor of Ken Abbott and Steve Haynes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. For tree warden, we have Roger Bromley. And Roger's good with that position.
I make a motion we appoint Roger Bromley.
Okay. I'll second it. Any other nominations? Okay, there being none, all those in favor of Roger Bromley for tree warden, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fence viewers, we have three of those. They are important, they don't get called out a whole lot, but they do sometimes to settle boundary disputes. And we have Mike Green, Greg Heaton, and Ben Bromley.
I'll make the motion we appoint them.
I guess my only question, or I'll second it. Then can I ask a question?
Yes.
Have we spoke to all of them? They all want their...
I have not spoken to...
Do you want the position?
Absolutely.
Did you get overworked last year?
Close. And this year, we get something.
I'll say this, I haven't heard from anybody, but they didn't want to do it. Okay, all those in favor of those three gentlemen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Rutland County Transportation Council, we have Charlie Bush and Tyler Pierce serving currently. Again, I have not spoken to either of them to see if they're interested in continuing, but I have not heard that they are not interested.
I make the motion that we put Charlie and Tyler as the reps.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of Bush and Pierce, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I do not see Shelley Taylor here, so I guess we are not having a planning commission report.
Well, the next meeting's not... We haven't had a meeting since, well, January.
Well, and...
Rutland Regional, I don't know if she's got one from regional. Yeah, our next meeting is April 7.
April 7 is their next one, yeah.
Yes, our local, I don't know about regional, though.
Regional, I saw something, I think it's March 25. Okay, we will move on to Treasurer's Report. Jennifer's been busy on a few different fronts.
So I gave you guys the budget status report, and I know that you... If you guys have any questions, um, any...
I'm good with it, Ken.
Okay. Um, I've been researching different retirement plans. Um, currently have a simple IRA, and the town is supposed to contribute 6%, and we're not allowed to do that with a simple IRA. So I've been looking at different plans, and Brad, myself, Jamison, Collette Sutton on a meeting with Mission Squares last week, the week before. And I am recommending that we go with a 457 plan. It allows the town to contribute to rent, and it has low fees, and the contribution limit, um, by employees, $20,500. The employee can withdraw it, um, withdraw money when they work with the company. And it seems like a really good fit for our employees. I gave you the pamphlet that Michael from Mission Squares sent to me, if you're ready.
Now, the other employees, have you spoken with everybody involved with it that wasn't in on the meeting?
I talked to them before the meeting, and I just asked them what... I sent them a list of the plans that I had researched, and I asked them what plan they thought they'd be interested in. And I had two, um, doesn't make a difference, and one was interested in the Beamers, like, pension plan.
Which you're saying is different from this?
Yes, it's, um, I checked into Capital Guardian, Beamers, and Mission Squares. So Mission Squares offered a 401A and a 457 plan, and then Beamers offered a defined contribution plan and a defined benefit plan.
So this one gives them more options?
It does.
Right. Because I read your thing you sent us, and it sounded like a good plan. I was just making sure I understood it.
Yes, and one thing about Beamers is you cannot withdraw your money while you work for the town, or like, you're still employed. You can draw it when you leave. Um, that was the one thing that kind of scared me for the 457.
Yeah, it's always a good option if you have a...
Problem.
Life, right.
Yeah.
You know, a major issue in your life.
Right, and how many are going to be older and ready to take money out, but they won't be able to if they still work, if they have Beamers.
Okay.
And if you, um, if you guys want any of the brochures that I received, I can definitely send that to...
Didn't you send us a lot of that once?
I think I did, but I didn't send it.
Are we gonna make a motion?
Well, I was just gonna ask, is the board comfortable making a motion at this time, or do you...
Did you have any input on that?
Um, I thought this offered the most flexibility, and I thought if we had no opposition to it from the employees, the one did want something else besides... Tanya?
No question. Um, we currently do not have a plan set right now, correct, that we're contributing to?
We do, but it does not allow us to contribute the 6%.
And that plan can be converted to what you have? Yes. So if people are converting or contributing, my question is that some people may choose to max their contribution. You're gonna be running out of time if you guys don't make a decision based on that. And I was just wondering if with not having a plan that currently allows you to make your claim at employer benefit, if you can roll it over from the last two months or so.
Um, so, um, I'm, I did not ask, I thought we could roll it over, but I did not check that, so I'm gonna have to go back.
I just don't want, somebody's planning to max their contribution. If you guys wait too much longer, they're not going to be able to. So you're, you're not gonna be helping your employee, you're actually going to be hurting them. Right.
I'm doing it.
So I can check. I just would hate to see somebody lose their contribution if they can't roll over something.
Could we do a motion pending...
Contingent on...
Contingent on being able to roll over?
Mm-hmm.
And if we can't, then we go back to the drawing board? There we do.
Well, I feel comfortable that it can roll.
I would say you should be able to.
I, 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 I definitely am not a certified financial planner, but that's, I'm confused on why it wouldn't.
Right, but, you know, once in a while, you run into that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
I guess my question is that you're, you're supposed to be paying 6% if you've already put money into the current retirement plan. Will they allow you to put the additional 3% that you've already paid for the prior months in?
So I stopped, um, we have to contribute it annually.
Okay, so it's not gonna fad back?
So, um, I've been holding it until we get our new plan, so that I can set up accounts for everybody, and, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the 457 plan.
I'll second it.
And do you want to include being contingent on...
I think we should.
Okay, I will sign it as soon as I'm done.
Most everything like that you can, but it's good to make sure.
Yeah, since it's a simple IRA, I don't see why you'd fail, because I want to check it.
So it looks like this plan is gonna give the employees the best option.
Yes.
Yes.
Especially for their own contributions.
Yes.
Because prior to the couldn't, right? You could only contribute. Is there a limit?
So this simple, it was $14,500.
So they're losing out a lot of money?
Okay, so I have a motion to use Mission Square 457 retirement plan contingent on being able to roll over the present plan made by Powers and seconded by Fuller. on being able to roll over the present plan made by Powers and seconded by Fuller. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so, um, contingent on the retirement plan. Um, we have to decide who qualifies for the 6% town contribution. And we'll have to work with Michael just to draw up, like, who qualifies for it, so we have it in our plan. And anybody can, um, contribute to the plan, like, and not receive the 6%, if that makes sense.
So you've sent letters to everyone?
Yes, but, um, we have to define who qualifies for the town contribution.
And what was the response to the letters?
To the employees?
Yeah.
Um, I haven't reached, um, I don't know who to give who.
You're asking about the 6%?
Yeah.
In the contract, it is the...
Road workers.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, isn't that, I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but I would assume that was, it was the road workers.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, with the company that we currently have, when I sat down with them, the plan that they advised us to take, um, it was offered to anybody who makes $450,000 or $450 a year, and it's over, like, 21, and that was the plan. Um, so it didn't make a difference if you were a whistler or an auditor, if you made $450, you would receive the town contribution.
If you wished.
If you wished. So we have to just draw up something, and we can define, in this plan, we can define who actually qualifies for the 6%.
But there's a contractual obligation with the road crew.
Right.
Any union member?
Right.
Right.
Your, well, it...
Your union contract states that you have to pay them 6%.
Yeah, but it depends if, because was there a certain date or that one wasn't, I don't know. I, I guess my thought is to get into the contract right now is tough unless we all have the contract.
Well, I think that part of the discussion we're going to have to come back to.
Yeah.
So we can have all our...
Yeah, read the contract and everybody, um...
Make the right decision.
So we'll look forward to a recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, so just so that I know what I'm working on next, um, you guys want me to put together something for that? Or will you tell me?
No, we're still talking the 6%.
Yes.
Let us get back to that.
Okay, okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, and, um, any other questions on the time? All right, um, today Brad and I attended a webinar about ARBA funds. Um, I have a 66-page slideshow, if you guys want, mommy's gonna send it to you. I was going to print it out if you guys were interested. I can go through and summarize it and copy the links over for you, so it's can summarize for him, if you would prefer that.
Would you send the whole thing?
Send the whole thing, okay.
Looks like Brad has highlights he wants to discuss.
We are still dealing with the basic six categories. The final rule is coming out the 1st of April. Um, as Jen said, it's a 44-page overview, um, with a 400-page guide. There are 83 subcategories. Accounting is required for each project, and any project we embark upon, we have to show that the town was harmed by COVID. So it's not like you can just take this money and say, oh, we want to do something with our infrastructure as we kind of were led to believe. You have to prove that something to do with COVID led to damage that infrastructure, and...
Damage the infrastructure or damage the town's income for being able to, or, so...
Right, so the only thing that I came away from this thinking about would even remotely fit into this is the communication tower that we had mentioned at some point. Because conceivably, um, if someone was somehow needing to get to a hospital because of COVID, and there could not be communication with the ambulance in certain areas of the town, you could make the case that this was necessary.
Do we have to prove that there was actually somebody that had to have an ambulance for COVID to qualify? Because we've certainly had plenty of examples where we've needed an ambulance or, or couldn't have communications, but... So the categories that, like, um, the stormwater or the, I guess sewage and potable water, you're saying we have to actually show that there was COVID damage to take that?
That the town was harmed or could not respond in some way that would have helped with the pandemic.
How about increased usage because of the pandemic, which then taxed the system?
Possibly, possibly. Greg?
I mean, I think at some point, I mean, this city and towns, if somebody would be able to provide some advice out to these towns, because whenever the government's involved, you know, you just saw 400, 500 pages, someone's going to be able to give some advice on how to really deal with it.
Well, and a lot of it is like outdated information now, like, you know, um, do you want to be able to have a vaccination clinic and whatnot, they were kind of past that.
Now, is final rule going to stay the same, or are we talking about...
We'll know on April 1st, but it sounds like it pretty much is. Many of these things, they want you to take the money that has been received and use that as the town's portion to get a revolving loan from the federal government to do, we'll say, an infrastructure project. So it's really, a lot of this is geared toward bigger places than Dambi, bigger municipalities, you know, that need to upgrade their drinking water systems or their sewage disposal systems.
More for city-type?
It's more for city-type places. There is a tremendous amount of bookkeeping involved with it.
Well, within the federal project.
Well, and the good news is since we're getting less than, is it $10 million was, yeah? Um, since we're getting less than $10 million, we only have to file the report once a year, but it's a 50-page report. And then that's subject to auditing.
I thought everything under $10 million, they weren't going to audit, they already said.
Well, that was what we were told a month and a half ago when it came out.
Well, they were...
I guess, I guess my only thought is, is April 1st is close.
April 30th.
Oh, April 30th.
April 1st is the final, yeah.
And what I'm saying is...
But April 30th, we have to have this 50-page report.
Which is going to be nothing in it. We haven't spent a dime, we haven't used a dime of it, so that should be pretty simple.
Can we just put an A?
Well, that's it, I mean, it's just one of the generic federal forms that, um, yeah. But I'm saying, should we wait for the very last final rule of...
Oh, I think so.
This, before we spend a half hour even discussing it?
Mm-hmm.
So that we're not going to get another change?
Right. So we all have that?
Have they sent us the 50-page report to fill out?
I don't think so.
I have not seen any.
When are they saying they're going to send us the 50-page report?
April 29th.
No, they did not say that, but they were very clear that you have to justify harm that was done by the pandemic.
Well, I would say all of our services were easily taxed a lot stronger with the influx of people coming here, even as using every, you know, amenity or every house in the area. So everything from A to Z in the town received more stress put on it than from our road system to our water system. So that's, I, I, I don't think we need to go crazy on that, but...
And then the, uh, those items that you mentioned, you would have to, um, any money that you were going to spend would have to be reasonably proportional to the harm caused. So, and you will see this when you look at the slideshow, Hilda?
Do you have to spend the money?
Well, quite frankly, and probably people are going to crucify me for saying this, but to me, I'm ready to just send the money back and say, no, thank you. It's, it's so complicated, and, and most of the things don't apply.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my thought is we're, we're way early into this. To fill out the 50-page report, I don't mind filling out a couple of things that are going to be blank until we figure out what we're...
When you sit there and you go down through the list, there are very few things that apply that Dambi can do.
Yeah, no, and, and those are government...
I mean, obviously, we're not going to send the money back, at least not at this point, and there's the second half of the money still coming, they've only given us half, but I don't, I don't see how we're going to be able to use it. Yes, Dan?
Would you consider hiring someone that would be more, 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 more capable of, of, of filling that report out?
Well, Dan, without seeing the report, I don't think I'm going to worry about it myself. I fill out a lot of 50-page reports that are federal and state, and I think I could have, um, my nephew, who's 11, do it. Um, so I, I think we're putting the cart ahead of the horse right at the moment, that could be a good point.
But I, I think maybe we could, if there is a 50-page report out there that needs to be filled, maybe we want to request it.
Oh, we certainly do.
Instead of waiting till April, April 29th.
Well, I'm sure when it's available to the towns, we'll see it. But like Mike said, that doesn't mean that they've got it printed yet, or even figured... I, I would think that they're probably got to wait for final rule before we can fill out anything. And I, I didn't see the webinar today, I mean, I will look at it before our next meeting, so I can speak to anything I read from it. But I guess my thoughts are, go ahead.
I also be concerned too, I know when they put out some money to businesses, the final print's pretty tricky. And some businesses who took it, you know, do everything right, you end up also, on the receiving end, having to give stuff back to the government, and they say, oh, we hand this out, hand it out, hand it out. There's a lot of strings attached, and some of those strings aren't even really defined yet. So I just want to make sure the town...
Yeah, and they, they gave examples like, um, if you had a restaurant in town that basically went out of business because of the pandemic, what could you do to Main Street to improve the streetscape and whatnot to make a new restaurant viable? So does that really apply to Dambi?
Is that webinar, um, recording available, can that be posted on the town website?
Yeah, should be, it's public.
I don't know, um, it's an outfit called, the, um, their logo is CLA, and that stood for...
Because I'm, I'm hoping, I mean, Tommy started to think the way I think you have to think, probably because you've filled out those kinds of forms so many times, um, just creatively about how it could actually apply and how, thinking about how COVID might have impacted something, to kind of think in, just outside of a certain box and get into their box in a way.
Yeah, and I think you're right, I mean, we weren't trying to embellish the federal government, but sometimes we don't think outside the box where we were actually impacted.
Right.
And I, I think that's the thing that we really want to look at, is the areas that we were impacted, that we just kind of suck up and say, yeah, I guess it's just part of life.
And I also think the, the point about some of these things that engage you in some kind of loan situation that you do end up getting, you know, you're, you're liable for something at the end. It's not just a giveaway, I think we have to be really careful about which things are rich, and...
Exactly, I agree.
But I, I'm, I don't have a lot of time, but I'm pretty interested in, I'd, I'd sit through looking at a webinar and a slide deck, just to see if I could get into that mindset, and think maybe about what Dambi could do with it.
We can certainly supply you with that, um, 40-page, and that has links and whatnot that you can...
But the, but you watched something that had people telling you stuff. Well, I'd love to see what they, I'd love to see that, if there's a recording of it, if you could, I appreciate it.
I don't know if there is or not, because you've been to plenty of webinars too, and once they're done, they're usually done.
Sometimes you can get, sometimes they're recorded, and you can get access to it, especially if you, as the participants, you can get access, if I want to...
It wasn't, um, it wasn't an interactive type?
No, but did you have to register for it?
Um, it was, yes, you sent them, I want to be a part of this, and then they just talked.
I'd just appreciate if you could inquire from them, you know, can we get a copy of that webinar?
Do you have the, the name of what CLA stands for?
Um, I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's how we're slowly going down that road. Any other treasurer's business? Okay, thank you. We have quite a few fleet permits.
Just list them all at once and...
I, I would, yes.
Yeah, and vote on them all at once.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve Barrett Trucking, Basin Brothers Trucking, Procter Gas, Structural Wood Corporation, Markowski Excavating, Steven Adams Excavating, Hunter Excavating, AmeriGas, Cardinal Logistics, Fuller Sand and Gravel, RK Miles, Steve Newton, and CNR Hauling. Make the motion, we approve them.
What does that, what does that mean, fleet permits, they can drive?
Let, let me get a second here, and then we'll, um, is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, so a fleet permit, they have to tell us the weight of their vehicles, the number of axles, the product they're carrying, and, um, that if we approve it, allows them to drive on our roads. Now, we would not approve it if it was over what weight?
Well, anything that's over the legal permit weights with the state of Vermont, we would. Um, now, I, I think we're at the point that Mike had brought up a thing when we got here tonight that, that we could probably, or not probably, we should probably, um, write into our permit some of the restrictions, because that's kind of where we're, that gives us the ability to control our roads. And we have certain roads that we'd rather not see the trucks on. And if we state that in the permit, then if the GPS is guiding them that way and stuff, then they're actually... then they're actually in violation of their permit. Now, I don't want to overblanket that, because there is going to be reasons for delivery trucks, especially, everybody's getting big items brought by tractor-trailer to their houses. So, we see tractor-trailers out in the middle of places. But I think that, and I know the permits have been in place for the 32 years I've been getting permits from the town, that we could maybe use it as a guidance tool for the trucking companies that do get their permits, and it would also help. And I know it's, now we're asking to do more work from the board or somebody to do it. But I think it's something that we should look into for next year, is that our permits forms, actually, we discuss some guidance, and I don't want to bring it up tonight, of, you know, which roads we're talking about, but I think we should put down the future agenda for discussion on which, you know, restrictions on certain roads. And we could also then put into it the, you know, mud season restrictions, so we don't have to discuss it with them all the time, because, you know, we're pretty, like I said, you know, in the past, is we're not trying to stop commerce, we just want to save our roads during mud season. And I probably, and I appreciate the calls, but when, even though we're posted, if we go into a freeze-up, it doesn't mean that they can't get in and out to get their products. And I think some of that maybe we could explain in the permits as well. And I just think that we're using it very generically, and we could probably improve our fleet permit.
And I mean, let's say we take a road and it's not on the fleet permit, that doesn't mean if they're, and we could put it in there, you know, if they're making a delivery on that road, instead of using these roads as shortcuts.
So, we could put a variance in there for, you know, as needed, or...
Yeah, like Darsa used to be, Moore Hill Road was no-through trucks. But if you were making a delivery on that road, you could go on the road. So, I mean, we could put, we've got some room, but I think it would give us a lot more control on some of these roads that are getting...
I think that's a very good idea.
Well, and that, I think, would help.
Keep them on the blacktop.
Yeah, I think...
Right, rather than using like Danby Hill Road as a shortcut.
Where GPS is sending people all the time.
Yeah.
Right, and that's the thing is, is it isn't their fault, it's kind of the boards or the towns by not telling them in their permits. And it would probably help us identify the ones that aren't getting their permits, because that's what the permits are there for, is guidance for them to safe travel and not to ruin, because without them getting a permit and thus not putting the restrictions in, we could have bridges that are weaker than where we want trucks. And when they go through a bridge, then whose fault is it? I mean, you know, we didn't have it in our permits, and they didn't pull a permit. It's somebody's fault. But, but not to go real long in this, I just think we had discussed it, and we should go further with it, and...
What's the acceptable number of axles?
Of what?
Axles.
Axles?
You said number of axles.
I didn't see...
Number of axles a truck has.
On the permit.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an, I think it's like whatever the truck's registered for, goes with the Vermont regulations for registration and wait what your registration is for the state of Vermont.
And typically...
Many axles does that have?
A what?
Well, that wouldn't be a registered truck.
Oh, okay.
It's not a registered, hey, are you not following the trucks that are registered trucks, or what we deal with? Or are you talking to dump trucks?
So, like a log hauler can, I mean, they're only going to have one trailer, not like another tag along.
So, I think your question is like if it's a trucking trailer, that would have eight axles. And the maximum weight on that would be 149,000 pounds. Most of them are two, three, or four axles.
Is it right to assume that the weight that's based on that is based on the legal registerable weight for that vehicle? So, like, you were saying a log truck, if they had a log truck in a pop, then they're legally registered for it.
Basically, my take on fleet permits is anybody that's taking the time to fill them out is obeying the law.
Right.
Or they wouldn't be filling them out to begin with. Pretty much.
Yeah, and the only thing is that we were trying to bring up is help with the guidance.
Right, but for somebody who's registered with the state, they may not necessarily think that we need to fill out a permit for the town of Danby.
Right.
To where anybody that's filling them out to come through Danby, I personally feel that they're trying their best to obey the laws. So, as far as the number of axles, you know, we could argue that, that my roll-off truck is a tri-axle, but if I've got the wheels down, I'm actually doing less damage to the road, because I'm distributing my weight better, and it's giving me an extra set of brakes to help slow the vehicle down. So, I wouldn't want to condemn anybody, because they've got a tri-axle, or even a quad-axle truck, if they're following the laws and doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Any other discussion on fleet permits? All those in favor of approving fleet permits for the companies I mentioned earlier, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to the road commissioners' report.
All right. Well, as far as our equipment, everything is in good operating shape at this time, so we're good for our next snowstorm. We have been over on the west side doing brush cutting, so we're getting some of the brush cut over. I think we were on Greenshill last. It is mud season, so I guess this will probably go out later than, but everyone understand mud season is mud season, and the roads are going to be rutted, and they could be muddy. I, I'm sure everybody's aware of it and is used to it by now. This weekend's snowstorm, for everyone who's here to discuss it, it's probably going to be challenging to plow the back roads. So, anyone who lives on a back road, it's going to be challenging to plow.
You're going to be grading while you're plowing.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing, is the roads really softened up, and so I think this weekend's going to be challenging.
Yeah, it was.
You agree with my guy parking up pretty good.
And that's probably all we have on that end. Under the equipment, I would like to discuss with the board, and I guess we can bring to the public's attention, about getting a mid-size wheeled excavator as opposed to buying just a roadside mowing tractor. And we're going to be able to do dual purposes with it. We can get a brush hog head for the, for the wheeled excavator, as well as use it as a digging machine, you know, for the ditching and stuff. And our costing, from what we've been discussing, is probably going to come in as cheap as just buying the roadside mower.
I've seen a couple of towns do that. I think Lunderly did that. I think it's Lunderly. Some couple of towns they work in bought a power to do their mowing and their excavating.
Yeah.
And Norchus got one too.
Yeah, it's, I think it's the in thing right now, because everybody's scooping them up.
Well, it makes...
You have a trailer all the time, you can...
Well, and that's the thing, is our trailer's rotted, so it's going to save us having to replace the trailer. So, it's going to give us a few extra benefits is our plan. So, hopefully by the next meeting, we will be discussing that more in depth on actual which equipment or which companies. There's really nothing to discuss on the next two items, Brad, unless you have anything.
Well, don't we, we need to approve the municipal roads general permit?
Oh, this one there?
Yeah, so there should be a motion for that.
Did everyone get to see our Culver inventory?
Is that what that is?
Yeah. And it is due by April 1st, so basically, it's showing where we're at on our, our stormwater plan, and I'm not sure how, if these guys want to look at it before we make the motion just to sign it, because I've looked it over, it's, their inventory is, their inventory is up to date as close as, there is two roads that we have done. We did work on, over in Scottsville last year, that isn't on this yet, and there was some on Danby Hill Road that isn't on this. But otherwise, if you guys want to look at it, it's, I don't know, 10 or 15 pages of that, but make a motion, Steve, that it's right.
Well, this is just like what we were going over with Stephanie last year, the sections are...
Yes, exactly.
This is, this is all our beautiful...
Same stuff, I looked it over online.
Yeah. Rocks and that thing.
So, I'll make the motion that we approve it, and if it's wrong, we hang time out to drive.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of signing the municipal roads general permit relating to stormwater, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and then there was a memo there about bridge number seven here on the Brook Road that...
And I think...
They'd like to come make a presentation.
Yeah, I'm thinking we should ask them if they want to come to our next meeting.
Which bridge is that?
Bridge seven, which is the first one, wants you head up the Brook Road after Tracy Belvin's. And I'm not going to talk about it, because the state wants to come give a presentation on it, so anything we discuss now may be a moot point. What was that, Greg?
This is where the rocks are falling?
Not quite that far, the one back toward.
I guess the only thing, and heads up on that, is they're going to be discussing wanting to close it, fix it. But I can't see it until the following year, so...
One by Tracy's house, or one past it?
The one past Tracy's. The one, they put some ribbon up, did you see it? It was, I think back this summer, they threw some ribbons up there.
Yeah, there's two stakes with ribbons on each side of it.
Trailer that sits beside the Brook, and then that bridge.
But they want to give us a presentation on it, which I'm...
They, I guess it's going to be quite a presentation, because...
Half hour.
Said...
Half hour and 15 minutes of questions.
Yeah, I saw that.
It will take about 45 minutes comprised of a 30-minute presentation and a 15-minute question period.
Can we take the corner out of the bridge, though?
I think that would all come up in the meeting.
If you could straighten out a little bit to match the road, that would help right there.
And I think there's a real problem with that one wing wall, like a...
Well, the only concern me is that's the last one we fixed. I don't think we fixed any since then, however. Steve, can you remember any other? That was the very last one we did.
That was the last of them.
So, we fix them all, and then we started the one that was last fixed, replaced.
Just like painting your house.
Okay, anything else on the road commissioners' report?
I think that's it.
Okay. Our next item is to discuss the town meeting non-binding Article 10, which was a vote regarding hybrid meetings. And this relates to Section 2 of Act 78, which is a temporary act that expires in 2023 relating to how select boards may hold meetings.
I think what we've got to do is put a list together of our policies for it, because we really didn't have a policy in place on, on the meetings. And then I guess we've got to drum up the equipment. And I don't know if you want to put down the agenda for the policies, you know, to, for next meeting, as far as adopting them?
So, who would develop these policies?
Well, the chairman, usually.
So, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I, I had done some research, remember after we talked?
Yes, yes.
So, I spoke to people at about four different towns. I had tried to call, I wanted to call them any more than that, but I just couldn't get to it. But I would be willing to help do that, because, you know, just, everybody has taken the opportunity to make things hybrid, so that more people can have access during the COVID thing. And the COVID harm, again, that's a place where probably ARPA money would help pay for the equipment.
Right.
So, that's, that's a really good use of some of that money. And I'm willing to, you know, talk to the people that are running these things, and try to glean from all of them what are the best practices, and...
Did you get any from them? Because you and I had that discussion...
Yeah.
Quite a while ago, and you were...
Well, basically, these are the towns I talked to. I talked to Pollet, Wells, Tenmouth, and East Dorset. And they do definitely have a person who like runs the technical aspect of that, okay? And if we, I call it a Zoom meister, because I'm most familiar with Zoom. And so, there's a person who's actually making sure that, you know, people can get on the meeting, that they have adequate access. They can also make sure that, you know, there's hand raising things, so that that person is in charge of that, so you guys don't have to look into that. And then they can keep a, make a cue of who would like to speak, and then you guys, then the chair would say, "Is there anybody on the meeting..."
In the queue.
"...who would like to say something?" And then that person would say, "Yes, I have so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so," and then you'd call them one by one. Now, if you have a meeting where it's a hot topic, where there's going to be a lot of people on the meeting, you can limit the amount of time that they speak, and you, and what you're saying, if you develop your policies and your norms for how are we going to do this, like, the person has to identify themselves, it can't be some random person that you don't know who it is, and all of that kind of thing. But I would very much be willing, I, when I called these people, I was basically saying, "Do you do this? Is there a special person who runs it? What platform do you use?" And that kind of thing. So, that was the information that I initially got. But I can get more information.
Could you give me the towns again? You gave, I was slow.
I did, I did Pollet, Wells, Tenmouth, and East Dorset. And actually, I talked to Bob Jaddy there as the town manager in East Dorset, and he's the one that has the expertise for the, you know, the whole mechanics of all of that.
Did they adopt, did they adopt any policies?
Well, that's what, see, now I could go back and talk to the same people again and say, "We're ready to jump on board. We want to find out more about, like, what policies do you use for how people are going to..."
And that's my biggest concern, is that we actually start it with policies in place, not that we pass them as we go along.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see whoever's running it should not be an outside entity that has their own agendas. But to me, it would be something that I don't want to come here and not be able to... To me, and you said once, I don't want to come here and not be able to speak because of what's happened previously at these hybrid remote meetings. Because I'd been there and they were just, you couldn't even talk being here because you weren't allowed.
Right, yeah. You were, yeah.
I want no part of that as a person. I'm going to take the time to show up here. I want to be able to have it be organized and orderly. And I, I'm not against it, but I also think it's not done right. It gives people a chance. People say a lot of things on the phone, they don't want to say, you know what? To me, they're a lot less respectful than when you face them. I just want to make sure.
Oh, you mean when they call in on the phone and you can't see who it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, they have to be right.
That's why you have to have people.
Well, and as several people who were advocating for these hybrid meetings said, the ones we had were chaos.
Right, and it doesn't have to be that way. So I would be very happy to start doing some of the legwork on finding out what other towns are doing, what best practices have worked for them.
I guess if they have actual adopted policies, we would love to see that.
Yeah, I'm happy to ask those questions.
Because I, I think that is probably our, our mission one on this is to actually feel comfortable with what we're.
Yes. And also then there needs to be an education piece. And that would mean that when we put it into place, the very first part of the meeting, somebody has to say, this is how we're doing this. And if you're not going to follow these rules, then you're off the meeting, basically.
And, and see, that's what I'm saying is that is a policy right there. You know, one thing that would be in, in the policy. And, and I didn't want to get into that right now because I think we should have a list.
No, and I don't think we should try to reinvent the wheel. I think we should find out what people are doing who know what they're doing and emulate them. And the other thing is, very much, I know somebody had said, oh, they're not elected, blah, blah, blah. And they, they just said, you know, the select board can hire or have a volunteer to help them with anything, but that's perfectly within the purview of the board. So you'd have to find the person that you think is impartial, does not have an agenda. You know, so I'm, I'm happy to do some of that work.
We appreciate it and.
Because I'm really, I'm really think, the more I thought about it, and for me, it was very much in the height of COVID. I can't go in those rooms, you know? But I, it occurred to me that there are people that are handicapped or, you know, that single mother that has several kids at home and can't, can't come out to this meeting. I just want to make sure that people in the town feel like they have access.
Right.
And if they're handicapped or elderly and don't, can't drive at night or whatever the reason.
So you will do that for us?
I'm volunteering, yeah.
You'll, uh, I'll put you on the April agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on the topic of?
No, I think that's a good forward movement on it and.
That's a good starting point. Okay. Any old business? Any new business? Dan.
Northshire Rescue.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
I don't know how familiar you are with what's going on there. Are you familiar with any of what's going on over there?
In the last month, we haven't heard any of the updates on it. So if you could fill us in.
Okay, there's nothing that, in this past month, there hasn't been a whole lot that has happened. So I have nothing new to bring this, from this past month. But you are aware that, I think, I hope you're aware that what's holding, what's holding up this contract is Manchester. Manchester, Manchester right now is refusing to sign the contract. And if they do, and the contract is good until July 1st this year, 2022. It expires 2022. So they're looking for another three-year contract. Manchester feels like they're being treated unfairly, I guess so. That as of right now, they've chosen not to sign the contract. And they're looking into scotting their own.
So they're still pursuing that path?
They haven't signed a contract.
What is the reason why they're feeling, um, why they're taking that stance?
There's a number of reasons that I really, I really can't pinpoint any one other than they feel they're being charged too much, right?
They pay $60,000 a year. They pay $60,000 a year, right?
More than that.
No, because they take in $124,000 a year in rent in dispatch fees.
That too. Their, their total cost is $191,000.
Pre-rent.
Right, I believe.
When you back that out, they pay $60,000. And, and I might be off by a few thousand, but, yeah.
We, uh, we're paying 26, right?
34 this year, wasn't it?
Me too.
Right. I thought it was 32.
Yeah.
Somewhere, somewhere in that, that.
Yeah, no, I mean, you have things off the top of your head, but I do know Manchester's because.
Oh, there you go. It should be right.
That if Manchester doesn't sign on, then the Northshire Rescue squad just disappears.
How are we going to do it? How are we, our rates are going to go up considerably. How are we going to do it? The other four towns, they're not available for it.
Now, you've been in the meetings with the community members, crack of them.
I sat the January 31st meeting, yes. And I attended the Zoom meeting last month.
Okay. So are you guys all as our representatives speaking with Manchester's representative to try to talk them up the ledge?
Well, I have not talked with the Manchester representatives, no.
But as, as a group, because this is, you know, and this is the, the thing that really, and I, I don't want to get into it a lot, is this has taken our community and shown as a community. And we could take a big circle and go around from Danby all the way up to Wind Hall, Manchester, Dorset. And, and that's really showing a community. And for us to operate as a group. And so I was hoping that our representatives could try to talk with the Manchester ones as well and try to get this under the understanding that one can't survive alone and one can't just leave by themselves, even though they talk that way. And it's just basically going to affect the service for the community in whole. And I was hoping that, you know, especially with you on our, as our rep, that we could get some rational talk with them.
I would be more than happy to suggest that to the others through Susan, whom is the.
Chair.
Chair. I'd be happy to do that and I'll get on the phone with her. We could certainly try.
Right, and, and I, and I understand that there was some issues, but in every, there's always issues, but really the ones that can work through them are the ones that really are the ones that we look to. And, and I was concerned that Manchester was just taking, well, we're not happy about it. And so I was hoping that we would hear that they're now thinking of, you know, trying to work this out better.
As of right now, as I understand it, nothing's changed. That was as of this past week. I sent Susan an email and asked her if there's anything she had an update that I could bring to the board. They're working on it as of right now, no.
So there's no meeting scheduled?
I don't, not right now.
Huh.
Not between, I haven't been informed of a meeting.
Right, and you would as our community rep or as our town rep, yeah.
And again, I just sent, I just spoke with her by email, just, it was Monday. Monday.
Now.
At this point, there's nothing, nothing new that I can bring to the point.
The other reps from the other communities, are they speaking out in the meetings as well?
Well, I don't know that. I mean, I just, I just got on.
Right, no, and I know you're new and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dan, at all. Because we're appreciative of you actually taking this on. It, it's at a tough time to be taking it on. It's not like just business.
We're just running, we're not some, I, I, I understand what you're saying and, and I'll, and I'll speak with Susan about that and see what we can do. At least the rest of us sit down with Manchester, hey, what's the problem? You know, without them, we.
Well, I, I think they got to look at it the other way too, is without us. I mean, they, they have a big tax base, but if they want to burden their, you know, town with another million dollars a year in, in debt, that's, that's obviously their prerogative. But that's, that's, I was hoping we'd see a quicker resolution.
Yeah, July 1st is right around the corner.
Yeah, it would be on top of us before we know it.
But I guess they, they, one of their complaints was respond, respond time. I don't get it. They had 781, 781 calls last year. So, 780, we had 81 calls. Break it down. I broke it down per call, looking at the numbers. We paid $320 a call. My life's worth 320, aren't we? I think it's 200.
Well, and, and I think you're right. See, we're, we're having the discussion that we should be having with Manchester too, though. And that's the sad thing is, you know, we're, we're having it amongst ourselves in the other communities, but it should be with everybody involved in this, you know, the services, meaning Manchester, since they're the ones that are more vocal of the unhappy. And actually, as far as I know, the only unhappy.
I'll see, I'll, I'll see what I can do to, to arrange that type of meeting this month.
Right.
I'll see what I can do.
I know you can do it, Dan.
And I'll contact you.
You'll get it done.
He's Danby's rep for Northshire, right?
I'm sorry?
He's Danby's rep for the.
Yes.
Northshire, but I guess the towns, have these different towns already been affected? Have they reached out to Manchester, you know, at the town level? You know, the select board, the chair saying, you know, this is from the Danby's select board. This is from the, you know.
Well, as far as I know, every town is going to sign but Manchester. Am I correct on that? All the represented towns
Yes.
are ready to sign the contract except for Manchester. So that would be saying to me that we're all on board supporting the Northshire. And, and we could make this like a two-hour-long meeting on that. And I, and I, I want to touch on anything that's pertinent, but I don't want to
Yep, I get it.
get into a.
I'll do that. I'm sure you can do it.
Any other new business? I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. What time is it?
8:23.
To discuss a real estate matter.
I'll make a motion. Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I will entertain a motion relative to the De Cresenzzo property.
And make a motion that the town does not pursue taking over the property.
I'll second it.
Did you say town not taking over the property?
No.
Not except the donation of the property. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, that was the last item on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.